So, good morning. This is Wednesday, May 21st, and it's 11:33, and so I would like to end the Athens City Planning Commission meeting. I will call that meeting to order now, and there is a quorum. We have one member, one member who will not be here today, the mayor, and then Mr. Phillips will be coming, and he'll be a few minutes late, but we'll get started anyway. So, we do have a quorum. With that, the first item of business is the disposition of the minutes of May 7th, as everybody had a chance to take a look at them, and are there any comments or concerns of any type?
Move to approve.
Okay. If not, then I will entertain a motion to accept the Planning Commission minutes from the 7th. Is there a motion to that effect?
I move.
Second.
Second, thank you. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Maybe in order to give Mr. Phillips a chance to get here, let's jump to any communications, and we'll take a look at that. Ms. Jennings, do you have something you'd like to bring to the table?
Yeah. So, within the larger discussion about potentially rezoning the Columbus-Columbia-Lancaster Avenue, we met several weeks ago on site, myself and John Kaitowski and Chris Nicely, and kind of walk around. And at that time, John provided a map that he had handwritten on with some, his own thoughts on maybe what parcel should be zoned what. And so I have taken that into GIS and kind of applied our same zoning colors so that you guys could see what his proposal is. And I brought up a map for today for you guys to kind of include within the larger conversation about the rezoning of that part of town. I have had a couple of people from the like North Side neighborhood or over on the West Side reach out. They had heard about kind of our discussions, and so I just clarified to them that these are still very much in draft form, that this conversation started because of discussions about future utilization of the old fire station headquarters, and that we would likely be reaching out to the neighborhood for some public engagement about this rezoning once we're able to really move forward on it. I guess like if any of the Planning Commission members have comments or ideas about what they think is appropriate, you're always welcome to share that with myself and David. If you even want to draw up on a map kind of what your thinking would be appropriate, I'd be glad to bring it into GIS as well so that I can, we can all kind of look at that proposal together.
One of the key things that in me putting that drawing together was drawing on my thinking, but also Mr. Riggs' thinking with regard to trying to provide buffer. And so one of the things, you know, we show that R2 here, and that's, was the whole intent of that. It looked like it made some sense to do something like that, anyway, but...
And that, I'll say, that is the biggest difference between what staff had kind of originally proposed and what you had proposed, John, is just adding more of that R2 as a buffer.
Yeah, okay. So... Is there any, you know, kind of looking at the Lancaster Street portion of this, and the old Lancaster Street portion that is basically on the brick portion, you know, there to the, to the immediate west of the cemetery, is there any consideration with the fact that a lot of those parcels that front on that Lancaster Street and where their back faces Columbus Road, that a B1 or a B3, and I'd have to look at an aerial over there on the, that northern portion of it where it switches from B1 to B3, that it would create a situation where we would have a non-conforming use, right? Because B1, you can have residential on the first floor, and I know there's residential on the first floor, at least the first floor that it butts out onto Lancaster Street. But what about, you know, as we get further north, we're in the B3, would one of those, are any of those parcels right now have a, have a residential on the first floor, would create conditions where we'd have a problem?
Looking at the current land use method I provided a couple of weeks ago, there is one parcel on the other side of that line that's marked as single family according to the county auditor's land use codes. And I will clarify, this lighter pink color is the B2 zone, not a B1 zone. So, if you're concerned about creating non-conformity specifically along Lancaster Street where there is a stronger residential presence, we can definitely talk about maybe rezoning that to an R2 or an R3 rather than...
Or just extending that B1 a little further, right?
Yeah.
Because you can do first floor residential on B1, right?
I'm not sure, I can't remember right now what that residential use is kind of currently in that B3 zone.
That's, that's the one thing that kind of jumps out to me. The other thing is, you know, the section where we put that R2, I think that Sunset makes a lot of sense there for the parcels that front on Sunset. I don't know how that southernmost R2 parcel has access. I think it has access onto, onto Second through one of the parcels, and they may be tied, but I don't know for a fact. Not that that matters necessarily, but thinking about where you would, where you, how you would use that parcel.
Yeah, I think when we walked there, we didn't believe it would be very accessible off of Columbus Road at all.
Right, right.
You know, so you would have to get into it either off of Second or probably off of Third or in that area there beyond Dairy Queen.
I mean, the fact, the fact that it's subdivided now, I mean, there should be front edge or an easement somehow to get to it, or it should be tied by a landhug to somebody from an ownership perspective. I just, I just don't know because it's been shown in the map.
Right.
I think there's an unaggregated alley on Second, Andy, that gives that access.
Okay.
So, this will be something that, Megan, you'll bring forward at, at a future meeting, then. And you're, and basically what you're seeking is more comment as to how to, how to structure this. Okay?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
And do we have a public meeting scheduled at this point?
I can get one scheduled. I've been to with Michelle Paffin.
Yeah, Paffin.
Okay, thank you. But I haven't reached out to schedule an official meeting yet.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Do you have any, so, Mr. Phillips, we are, we jumped past the cases to communications, and I'll try to finish that up, and then we'll bounce back up.
I apologize.
No, no problem. Megan, do you have anything, Ms. Jennings, do you have anything else?
No, that's everything.
Mr. Riggs, do you have anything for communications?
Just real quick, I wanted to let you know that we are working on a Title 41 proposed development that's going to be coming in, Hugh White dealership on Columbus Avenue. We're trying to get a pre Title 41 pre-meeting scheduled, seeing that in the next 30 days or so.
Is Hugh White leaving?
They're remodeling. They're changing, they're changing quite a bit what they're doing. There probably will be some demolition and some new construction going on. As a part of this, we're also going to, the old radio station is a, there's a triangle there that's outside of the city currently, and we asked that as part of this development that they would annex that piece into the city. So, that annexation's probably not going to follow the same timeline as our Title 41 zoning approvals. So, I've talked with Connor Lavelle at the county, as a county planner, and we're going to look at that piece as if it were in the city as far as potential permitting and stuff, because like for flood plain and for land development and all of that, even though it's currently outside of the city. We're going to act as if those approvals will be for when it is annexed.
Okay.
That's all.
Any other questions here at this point? Okay. Okay, let's, let's go back up to the cases. So, the first case is Case 25-04, recommendation to city council to allow a use not permitted. And I don't know what all the language is for that, but it's not, oh, I'm sorry, it is there, right there. In an R3 zone for Seven Congress, the gathering place, temporary huts or temporary homes. So, with that, Mr. Riggs, do you have anything to add to start?
Yeah, I did want to give you a, basically a recommendation in writing. I apologize that didn't get into the agenda is...
Page 14.
Page 14. Thank you. Oh, yeah, here we go. So, we, I did make a recommendation for, for your recommendation. If you want to try to, if you try to read that and see if that's acceptable to the Planning Commission. This is not a, this use is not permitted by the, by the zoning code as it is. So, what we would, what you would be doing is making a recommendation to the city council to allow this use. And I put in there a annual renewal provision as well.
Okay, good.
One thing, one thing I noticed, I think there is a typo in the last paragraph. You referenced Seven North Congress in a B3 zone.
R3.
Sorry, I was.
Good.
So, sorry, these are changes not for just these locations. These would be changes for everywhere.
So, this particular case is just for the use at that property, at Seven North Congress. It's, it's currently not permitted by the zoning code because it's an R3, and that use is not permitted. So, if you wanted to recommend this to city council, you would be recommending that that use be allowed even though it's not a permitted use by our zoning code.
But then you also are recommending changes to our code.
Yes, that's the second case.
That's the second case, yes.
Okay. Sorry.
No problem.
Yeah, they're similar, these two are similar cases, but they're not the same. One's a specific case, and the other is for, in general, if we want to allow Conestoga Huts or temporary housing shelters, where would we allow, and then how would we do that? That's what this Case 25-05 is.
So, the first one, it almost is like a PUD, really. I mean, but it's not, right? Because a PUD is a separate thing. But the idea is that there is something that, that is incongruous with the zoning code, and there's a special use someone's looking to do, and council is the entity that has to grant that, like, much like they would with a PUD for a particular type of development. In this case, it's not a development, it's just a, doing something in a zone that you're not typically allowed to do. And it's a, it's a one-off address situation, and we're going through Planning Commission because this is the process for changing zoning. It's Planning Commission first, and then making a recommendation to council, council then does it. So, that's the one-off. And then the next one is actually changing the code in order to allow for this in certain circumstances.
So, a question to all of you. So, this is granting permission, an annual renewal. Is it, in a sense, granting it in perpetuity? And I know sometimes we have things that are grandfathered in. What happens in this case? I mean, what happens, Apple Pie in the Sky and Gathering Place gets a new facility, or they move?
Right.
To the old, old fire station.
Yeah, so this would be specific to the property, and it would be renewed annually. So, you can choose to do that or not. But what I wanted to do here was to make this specific for the property. Because the zoning typically goes with the property and not with the owner of the property or the, the developer of the community. So, what we, what we're doing here is we're allowing that use on this property regardless of who the owner of the property is.
So, it is in perpetuity?
Well, I put annual renewal in there, and...
Got it. Yeah, that's, that's good to have it.
So, if they chose, if they chose not to, not to renew that, then that use would stop.
Got it.
Should that annual renewal be administrative or legislative?
That's what I was going to ask, exactly that question. Where, where does that renewal happen?
I would recommend that that would be at the city council level. So, the city council would have to renew it annually since they're making the approval.
Gets too much, too frequently?
Yeah, I think it might be too much, once a year to go back to city council. Would they then have to go through three readings for that, or suspend the rules?
Like every year they would, yeah.
Yeah, so it seems like to me, maybe it would be better, at least in this particular instance, we can talk about it in the other, but maybe it's every two years or something like that.
That's just my recommendation to you.
Yeah, okay.
I would propose moving that to biannual. That would be every two years, then.
Perfect. Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I just don't think this makes any sense. You know, there's plenty of locations, but this is in the heart of downtown. There could be a business there, a small coffee shop. I mean, there could be so many other uses there. And to make that in the center of town for all visitors to see, I just, I struggle to understand why this is the best location for these. And if I'm a business owner, or I'm in R3, and it affects my business value, I would be very disappointed. So, yeah, I mean, unless we want a billboard in downtown Athens that says, you know, this is going on, I just don't understand why you would want it on a busy corner that hundreds of students walk by every day. But, yeah, I just, I just don't see how this makes any sense. So, that's just my, my opinion.
I would note that we are calling this an accessory use. So, even on this case, in this case, if the primary use of the, of the property stopped, this accessory use wouldn't be, you can't have an accessory use without a primary use. So, if there wasn't a primary use there, the Gathering Place went out of business or moved, because this is an accessory use, that would, that would negate the ability to continue to use it on that property. And we set that up on this and in the, on the next case of the changes to Title 23. These are accessory uses. They're not primary uses for the, for the property.
Anything else there? Any comments? Yes, and I would ask, when you get to the podium, raise your right hand, and hopefully agree with what I ask you to agree to, which is to, everything you will provide as a part of your discussion here is true to the best of your knowledge. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks. I'm Rob Delish, live at 124 Morris Avenue here in the city. I'd just like to comment based on what was just discussed here, is that I think it's not the best location. I agree with that. But it's, I think, the only option that's currently available, and that's ultimately why we're here, is because there was a better location that didn't even require zoning change or approvals or anything, and local businesses adjacent to that property influenced the county to make a decision to not allow it there. So, essentially, the NIMBY effect happened here with the local businesses. They didn't want it in their backyard. And I think we're going to maybe get that in a lot of places in the city, unfortunately, for something that's badly needed to support our community. I think that city council's discussion of this will be interesting to see how it goes. But I think we should, we need to try and make this work. Unless the city has other ideas of a property, maybe the city could volunteer for this purpose. I don't know what other solutions there are, so I just want to put that out, that we've already had the best location, I think, for this failed, and failed for the wrong reasons, in my opinion. And I'd hate to see it fail again. And it is temporary, and I think that, that finding a better location is the goal of this organization.
Can I ask you a question? So, you said it's badly needed. How many people could stay, how many units could be here in this location?
I think that at the last meeting, they're proposing three. And I asked how, if the site was large enough for how many. And I think the discussion was, there's a lot of other uses for the property. They don't want to, they don't want to put, you know, fill it up completely. But in the end, it was like a maximum of six. And I see, would you, would you want to speak to that?
Yes.
Please come in and give your name and address, and also raise your right hand and say that everything you will, everything you will be providing, all the information you'll be providing to this commission is accurate and true to the best of your knowledge.
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Kelly Barar. I actually live in Coolville, but I am on the board of the Gathering Place. And so, it is our intention at this point, three would be what we would be looking at. And we do use the parking lot for several other uses, mostly for our van and for staff and folks that are staying at the Bridge House. So, six is probably the maximum it could potentially have, but three is what we are wanting to start with.
Okay, thank you. I guess just to the point, there is a need, and I, and I agree with you, there's a need.
Absolutely.
But I don't know that three makes a difference. And in the location in downtown Athens, in the view of everybody, it's just, there are so many other uses for that space. And to say, we're fixing a need, we're not fixing a need, we're helping three people, you could say families, whatever, but if it's three different families. And yet, there's local businesses, there are other people, and it's just, it's a billboard of, you know, there's Conestoga Huts here. And I just don't know that that's what downtown Athens, as we're trying to recruit more businesses, I don't know that that's in the best light, when there could be another location that could have 12, and then you actually are helping a bigger need, and it's also not retracting from.
I think that's a fair point. I think that starting with three makes it not too overwhelming. And helping one person makes a big difference. And that's really what this is about, is showing that a small organization can take one small step to make one difference in one person's life, and that can help even, I guess, show the community that we can do this. And it's a starting point. That's all it is, is a starting point. And a lot of what we do at the GP is to try to show people that there is opportunity for them, and it doesn't have to be in the darkness, you know, or, you know, somewhere where they shouldn't be. And this is just a chance for us to make a tiny step in that direction. Yeah.
I also would, would add that I, one of the things that attracts me to support it would be the fact that we would have an opportunity to see how well it works.
Absolutely.
And whether, you know, whether it does in fact meet some needs and also can be done well and not distract.
And start small, right? And that's why we want to start small, as a prototype, using best practices, you know, and being diligent at how it works, you know, as a model. And the only way to do that is to start small, you know, and to keep it manageable. And at that location, I think it is quite manageable actually, because the staff are there every day to monitor it. And so I, I think it's a great opportunity.
Could, so with, if, if we were to approve this, can they expand to six without further approval?
I left that out of this approval to see what, see what the board wanted to, wanted to do. So, you could approve it for as many as you want, or restrict it to three, six, whatever, whatever the board feels is acceptable.
You know, I think we're talking about a land use, right?
Yes.
And I think that, and an accessory land use at that. And so, just thinking about, you know, working within the confines of zoning, are there other places in zoning where we say a quantity of something based on square footage, or, you know, I'd rather not just pick a random number. I'd rather, I'd rather it be tied to square footage, parking space available. And I know there are for things like parking spaces and stuff like that. Would that be a, like...
We did, we did just add quantity limits for the tobacco and vape store and the marijuana uses as well. So, that's a more recent land use that we added a maximum amount allowed within each zone.
I mean, like, we'd say things like three unrelated people in a rental property, right? In a single-family home rental property, that's a, that's a cap, right? And so, like, if we were to go and say, because this kind of bleeds into the next discussion, right? I mean, there's this specific spot, and what can fit on this spot. But then there's the wider discussion, like, density, if we're going to allow a particular accessory use. And that density really kind of should, should have something to do with square footage, I think, or acreage.
If you see on the next case, I tried to tie the number of, number of temporary shelters to facilities, like restrooms and sinks and that kind of stuff. So, I did tie it that way. So, you have a number based on the number of facilities that are available to those people that would be living in the, in those temporary shelters.
So, in that vein, with the next case, what is that, one-to-one, two-to-one?
It's three, I think.
It's three.
Yes.
It's three to one sink and one toilet within 200 feet.
Three people or three?
Three structures.
Three structures to one sink and one toilet, all right. And then, I mean, so I guess, and, you know, if, if we, if we just kept it that way with this, you know, not to exceed three structures per, per sink and toilet available. And that way, we don't have to say three, or six, or five, or 27, or whatever.
And then it's consistent with this other code.
It's consistent with what we're, what we might be recommending on the next one.
Well, and I would also bring it into compliance, if these proposed zone changes with the temporary housing shelters do get approved.
Right.
This property would be operating in compliance with what the zoning would then allow.
Right. Okay. So, I would, I would propose, sir, in addition to the modification to this language for biannual, I would also propose, the number of structures is limited to, is limited to one per available sink and toilet. No, three per available sink and toilet.
Right. Okay.
And the primary structure, right? Okay. And the primary structure, right? Okay.
Anything else?
We've talked about notification before. When would businesses be notified and neighboring owners?
So the way this is set up, there's a public hearing at City Council level. That's where the notification would come out for this specific use on this specific property. When they do the code changes, if the City Council chooses to move forward on the code changes, the same thing would happen. They would have a public hearing. We would hear back from anybody that wants to speak on it at City Council level.
But do they actually get like a letter mailed to them if this is going on?
No, it's only given to any other use. So if you had a restaurant became, and we don't notify the neighbors of that use, that's not something we typically do.
Okay. We just talked about it when we were talking about these apartment multifamily things that, to notify the neighbors that there would be a change happening. And I just think over-communication, once again, would be really important for this, because you could say, well, we didn't have to, we didn't have to mail you any letters, but does that mean you should have? I think that is a different question, so.
We made the, I'm sorry, I don't mean to jump in here, but we made the applicant do, we didn't make them. We asked the applicants to do notification prior to the public hearing, right? In the case of like the zoning change with those, applicant that was asking for the zone change. So in this case, I mean, you know, that might be an appropriate thing to do here as well.
This is actually similar to a zone change, but it would be more of a spot zoning, which we don't want to do.
Yeah, we don't want to do spot zoning, but this is a unique circumstance.
Anything else? Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept this or a motion to not do this, I guess.
Make a motion to approve case 2504.
Based on the language that was provided by Mr. Riggs with the change of annual to biannual and with the information, within a limit of three units per sink and toilet available.
Correct.
Wait, so are we voting on 2504 or 2505?
2504.
So this is just regarding this property. The next one is?
Is for a more broader.
And you're proposing to approve 2504?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take up 2505 here.
Okay, I thought you were, these changes had to do with this property. It does or does not? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, okay. So it was moved by Ms. Nysley. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Stone. Okay, is there any further discussion before we take a vote? Hearing none, so all those in favor of approving this, the case 2504, based on the language that has been proposed with its amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so it has passed three to one. Okay. The next item on the agenda is case 25-05, which is changes to the Title 23, to Title 23 to allow temporary housing shelters in R3 and B3 zones as permitted accessory uses. Any further?
Chair, thank you. This is the, we looked at this at the last meeting. I did make a couple of changes to it. I moved the temporary housing shelters to an R3 district as well as a B3 district. And I made some additional changes that they shall only be allowed in an R3 residential and a B3 general business zone. And I added the temporary housing shelter must be reapproved every year. The rest of the language is the same.
So it's at the back. So we're basically looking at pages 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19, the other, and 20. So it's the last, the last six pages of the packet are what we're talking about for this case. The other, the other references in the document are from the minutes from the previous thing, okay?
Correct.
I would just ask that, I think there has to be language that you get some percentage of acceptance from adjacent property owners. I mean, I don't know about, a lot about the city code and city, but in a homeowners, homeowners association, you have bylaws and you have restrictions so that it maintains the value of all the properties in that. And if they all decide to make changes to that or allow something, then those changes can be made. But it's about protecting property values. And so all of a sudden, you're allowing one person to do something without having to approve that it could affect property values around that area.
Ultimately, that's what zoning code is, right? Is that homeowners association for the entire city. And this process is that process by which we make those decisions as to whether or not it's gonna do it. Because, I mean, there's some places in the city we can put a strip club. Not very many, but by zoning, you can. And if I want to do it, I can do it. Regardless of whether the person next door likes it or not, and I don't have to get permission from that person next door, because that's what zoning does. So I agree with you, but I don't, you know, keep going. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, no, I guess I don't understand fully, but if you don't have to have approval, but it's, we changed this code. And now I'm gonna put a tent or teepee on the, you know, in my property and start.
So that's typically how this, how this works for most zoning. So if you allow a use in a zone, it's allowed without, you don't have to get permission from anybody. It's just allowed. We do have two other types of provisions. One is an accessory use, which this is, but you could also choose to do a conditional use. And a conditional use requires approval from the plant, from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So you would end up with a public notification. The neighbors could have to be notified. So one of the things you could choose to do, or could choose to do, is change this from an accessory use to a conditional use. And that would allow you to do what Mr. Phillips, what you're talking about, notify the property owners, allow them to have a say in the approval process that would go through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, that's great. I just, that's all I'm asking is because if this is a success, I think that's great if it can spread to different areas. But there has to be some input from people around that, hey, we've seen the success. We want that success in our area. Or we don't want that success in our area. So I hope it's wildly successful, but I would be, you allow it, just, you guys know all the details. I just, those are my concerns.
So my understanding, I hear your comments, but, and then my understanding, Director Riggs, that you're saying the conditional use that have to go through Board of Zoning Appeals would be the equivalent of what? Not the equivalent, but it's.
Providing the notification that is being sought, or thought is appropriate by Mr. Phillips.
This is a big change, and I would just ask that if it's worth tabling just to add some additional language of just making sure that you're, yeah. But whatever you guys decide.
I think you can amend it here. I mean, certainly. I do have a question, Mr. Chair, regarding conditional versus accessory use. So an accessory use is in addition to the primary use on the property. But a conditional use, I mean, typically how we do it, I mean, that's what the property is being used for. It's just conditionally used for something else. Can you make, and I know this is a, can you make a conditional accessory? You know, so like, you know what I'm saying? So that there is a primary use on the property. I have a, I have a house on this property, or I have a whatever on this property. And I'm also gonna put a couple temporary housing structures for a period of time next to it. But I don't think we want, is I don't think we want it to be the primary use on the property. So it needs to be in addition, because part of that is because we got to have the bathrooms, right? I mean, that's, so, but if we want to do what Mr. Phillips is saying, and, you know, have some sort of public notice that goes to the adjoining property owners that there's a, you know, that this is being considered next door, and they gotta go to the BZA to get a variance, then we would have to make it a conditional. Can you do that? You know what I'm saying?
I believe you can. And a conditional use, you would say this is for an accessory use only.
Okay.
And then that would be under the conditional use. It would be conditional and accessory.
It would be conditional and accessory, okay.
So now I have two additional questions. If we consider amending the language to do that, are we in effect then saying if we approved 2505 and built in conditional use on that, are we negating what we just approved to permit the Conestoga huts?
Well, since they would have to return for a reapproval, it could be they could return to the BZA and file a conditional use permit once the reapproval comes around.
Right. I mean, I don't think so, right? Because again, back to my argument that it's like a PVD, right? It's a unique one-spot thing. And I know to the planner's perspective of trying to, you know, when you pass the new code, you don't want to create a condition that you just did something that doesn't jive with the new code. But, you know, I think one of the things that we need to talk about with this, and this is important, this is one of the things I really wanted to talk about with the commission today, is, is R3 appropriate? Or should it only be B3? Or should it be both R3 and B3? Or should it be only R3 where we allow this? Because, you know, right now, that spot one that we just did with the previous case was for an R3 zone, right? And what we had proposed last time was only in B3s. And then for purposes of discussion, we pulled it into R3s as well and just to see what people thought we should do.
Yeah.
Can you go through and read specifically, David, the language, so for the public?
Yes, what we added for both of these, both of these uses, temporary housing shelters is a permitted accessory use in an R3 and a B3 zone. The wording is temporary housing shelters, housing structures of a temporary nature that are not affixed to the property and that do not contain a kitchen or, that do not contain kitchen or bathroom facilities. One sink and one toilet must be available for use within 200 feet for every three temporary housing shelter units. Prior approval of the Safety Service Director must be obtained before the approval of this use. Temporary housing shelters must be reapproved every year. Temporary housing shelter accessory use shall only be allowed in an R3 and a B3 general business zone.
With regards to that language, here's a question. Within 200 feet for every three temporary housing shelter units, it doesn't necessarily expressly say it's for the primary use on our property. I think we probably need to have it be like, like you can't say the house next door or the parcel next door is within 200 feet and that counts. You know, it needs to be the primary use on the property provides that. And so I think I would say within 200 feet inside the primary, you know, at, or at the primary. You know, I don't know, I suppose we could.
What I was trying to do there, just so you guys know, is I was looking at, maybe we wanted, maybe a church wanted to do this. They would have, you know, their, they would have some of their space that's not on the church property itself. They could have an accessory, adjacent parking area that they wanted to set it up.
I see.
So I wanted to allow that with a certain, within a certain distance.
Well, I suppose that approval, that approval mechanism, you could validate that the, that's sufficient, right? That it's not, you know, just counting the next-door neighbor's bathroom, and the next-door neighbor doesn't even know. Okay. What do we think? Looking at that map over there, the, you know, the B3 is brown and the R3 is red. And so is it only the brown, or is it the brown and the red that we would be? Or is it, you know, those would be the two considerations?
Yes, Ms. Nysley.
Could I ask the planner and the code director, what goes through your mind when you see the R3 versus, and B3, or, you know, either or? I'm thinking we're considering either just B3 and then?
Right.
So for me, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
For me, the thing that's most closely matched was in a B3 business district. There is an allowance for, let's see if I can find it here. For, I'm sorry, for.
Residents upstairs.
Campgrounds and other high school facilities like that, those were, that was a conditionally permitted use in a B3 business district. And so this most closely matched that kind of a use, and that's why I originally had it in, only in the B3. Because it sort of matched what was already in the B3.
I guess my one thought about including it into the R3 zone is typically the uses in the R3 zone are private residential, whether they be rented. And access to a public bathroom facility may be a little bit more limited or tricky depending on the principal use. My one thought, looking at the map, is the majority of our R3 zoning is the OU campus. And we have had discussions with them about rezoning to an EI. They are potentially interested in that. And so it can be a little visually, oh, what is the word I'm blanking on? Misleading, because there is so much R3, but that doesn't directly reflect the uses that we allow in the R3 because of the campus. And my thought about The Gathering Place being currently zoned R3, whether or not that zone is even appropriate for that property. I know that's not a part of the discussion, and we're not actively looking at rezoning that property at all. But just wondering whether or not The Gathering Place being R3 is even appropriate for its uses. So I understand wanting to move it to the conditionally permitted uses. That would allow for the BZA to look at thresholds and really what's appropriate, some distance requirements even. They could do that. And then whether that be in the R3 and the B3. I'll leave that up to the planning commission to decide, but.
Mr. Stone.
Are there concerns or that, things you can think of other than, I mean, trying to provide housing for homeless populations that could happen with this? Like, is there a second-order effect? Because, you know, we're, we're talking about this from the perspective of the, you know, the fact there's a severe housing shortage at the moment in the United States, and there's a lot of people that aren't housed. Looking forward, say that all of a sudden, there's been a great opportunity and a bunch of people build houses, and we kind of tamp down the problem of lots of unhoused people in the United States. Is there some sort of thing we're not thinking about here if we allow temporary living shelters? You know, because right now, you can do that in R1 if you're building a house, right? I mean, like, you can live in a tent on your property as long as you're building a house on that property. Is that the case? But I mean, are there, yeah, are there certain other things that we?
One of the things we were curious, we talked about in my office, was whether, you know, somebody would try to use this to put up some tents and rent them out. We don't think that's appropriate, because they would have to get a rental permit, and we would be able to refuse it. Because it's not, it's not an appropriate structure for a rental. Can't think of many other cases where this would, you know, something's gonna come up that we don't think through. But we tried to think as much as we could of what would happen, what are the other potential effects of this? Didn't come up with a lot.
About like events? And I think we'd run into, you know, like you're having an event and the event.
We've actually been talking about that with our structure point, about should we have a special event wording in our zoning code? So we're looking at that as well. That's kind of a, that should go a separate direction. If we were gonna do that, we'd want to have that as a special, those tents or structures, temporary structures as a special event where people aren't necessarily gonna be living in.
Yeah, because right now, I don't think you can, like, you couldn't do a thing at camp somewhere.
Campgrounds are allowed in a B3 conditionally.
How's the fair do it? And I realize they're a separate government entity as a, as a agriculture society, but, because they, I mean, that's really the only place I can think of in this. I can think of in this.
They don't get permits.
Yeah, and that's because they're...
They're quasi-governmental.
Quasi-governmental organization, yeah. That's the only place I can think of where camping happens, like regularly in the city.
So, so I, I'd like a little bit more clarity on conditional versus accessory use. So what, where would there be a property, or what, what would be the condition where we, a property would be a conditional use, um, that doesn't already have some kind of a business or some, some kind of a primary use to it? Would it be if somebody tore a house down, um, and had a vacant lot, or how does that, is that, would that be a situation?
Well, for a campground, for instance, if somebody wanted to put a campground on a vacant piece of property, that's a conditional use in a B3, and it would have to go through planning commission prior to, uh, or, I mean, BZA, prior to, um, approval. So, yeah, you can have no, nothing out there, no primary use, and still go through the conditional use, uh, process.
Uh-huh. I, I mean, I was just trying to think of when, you know, if, if we change the language from accessory use to conditional use, what, what would be, um, I, I just, I don't know where, you know, where in the city there wouldn't already be a primary use for the property. And I, and I don't, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What about down across from Smiling Skull? Like, you could put up 30 of these things. And so, I, I don't, I don't know who owns that property, but you know what I'm talking about? There's that big parking lot and right outside, you know?
With the, with the train station.
So when you talk about where in the city, that takes huge areas. So I think that's something that, once again, if you're, there's businesses around there, and you're sitting outside eating, and this is across the street, I think that's something that has to be considered of, what are you doing to have, um, so that's, that's what came to my mind, is that where else in the city, and that's a huge spot where that...
I think that's a PUD. Um, I think that's a PUD right now. And the city owns a portion of that in its lease, uh, long-term to the operator of the facility. That said, I think it was a PUD when I went through, and it was like in the...
I think you're right, yeah, yeah.
So I don't know anything about the property. I was just, if, if you put this in, and that, and that wasn't approved, and that could put up a bunch of these, that's what's going through my mind, is what should we be certain of before a bunch of those go in that wide-open area, and that is a big entrance and exit to, to our downtown? So...
If there was interest in moving it to the conditionally permitted uses, um, on the very last page of your packet, you can see where the campgrounds or trailer parks are listed as a currently conditionally permitted use, and within that, there are guidelines that the Board of Zoning Appeals can lean on when they're reviewing these applications. Those are, um, we can definitely create some of those for this use if we feel like it's appropriate to move it to a conditionally permitted use and provide some guidelines if the planning commission themselves would be comfortable with the BZA checking their any applications that may come to them. These are essentially establishing use standards that the BZA can, like, review while they're looking at each application.
So, so, so from my perspective, there are two things here that we're talking about. One is, um, as Mr. Stone had stated, um, are we, you, what do we wanna do with regard? Is it, should it be an R3 only, B3 only, or both, or none, I guess? Um, you know, and then, uh, and then the other is, is the right language to establish it as a conditional use for, versus an accessory use, or, so I don't know how we, where do we go from here on this? I'm not sure.
Do you think we need more work?
That's what I'm thinking, actually. I don't know what...
I think they need some guidance from us, though, because what I don't wanna have them do is, you know, we ask much questions, they go back, write something else out, and then we...
And we, yeah, we have the same situation, so, go ahead.
Do we have, and I, I'm wondering, do we have a sense? I mean, my initial reaction would be, after all this discussion, to maybe consider conditional use in B3 only.
That would be the most restrictive.
And I'll throw that out there just as a, yeah, for discussion, or, and, and I don't know, can we arrive at consensus to give him a sense of direction, yeah?
Well, there is a Board of Zoning Appeals member here who, basically, would be turfing to the court if we make it a, 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 a conditional use, so we probably ought to ask.
And I, and I think he had something to say, so...
So I'm Rob Delich. Um, I live here in the city. I'm also Chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city, and been serving that capacity for a year and a half or so, something like that, maybe two years now. Um, first thing I'd like to say is actually not related to my responsibility as the Chair, um, but as a citizen, I think the R3 here is still a good idea. Um, that, that use seems to, I think, work with this kind of accessory as, in a temporary fashion. I think it, it's compatible, I believe. For example, there's churches on Mill Street where the R3 zone, that would be potentially good examples of where that, this could work. Um, there are, some of them adjacent to the university, real close to the university, some not. But, so I think it might make sense to have R3 in here, and I said this last time, too, we discussed this, but, so that's the private citizen comment that I have. As far as Board of Zoning Appeals, I think one thing to keep in mind, it looks like the way this is written currently, it's, it's the Director, uh, Service Safety Director that has the decision to make here, uh, with the accessory use. And so he would have to, they would have to weigh, I think, input from the community. If there, I don't know if there's some kind of public hearing, probably wouldn't happen with this, but I'm not sure how they would get feedback on whether or not this is something the community thinks is a good idea to help make, and make the decision. Um, the Board of Zoning Appeals takes those kind of things into consideration, so that's where the big difference, I think, is. Um, Board of Zoning Appeals, we have standard things for variances we ask, questions we ask. One of them is absence of detriment. It's technically not explicitly listed as something for a conditional use. So we do conditional uses, we've had many of them regularly for owner non-occupied Airbnbs or short-term rentals, in other words, um, within the corridors, mostly they've been within the corridor of like Stimson, uh, Stimson, uh, East State Carpenter Lancaster Streets, Columbus Road. Um, and we deliberate on those things carefully. We take into consideration if there's adjacent neighbors that have expressed support or, or don't support it, um, and make a decision. Um, so I, I think the Board of Zoning Appeals, while we, in that particular case with the short-term rentals, we don't really appreciate the city council put that on us, honestly. Um, but we've been doing a good job with it, I think. Um, if we add this on, I don't see a lot of these requests coming through, but I think it is the place where we can have, um, that feedback from the community, help us make the decision, and if there's stipulations that could be put in, like, uh, City Planner Jennings mentioned, that might be helpful to the board to help us refine the questions we're asking to make the right decision. So I think that that's a good, good addition. So if we go, go this road where the Board of Zoning Appeals is looking at a conditional use, I think it could work. I think it might be a way to get the public input into the process, but providing the board with some things they need to be considering. Right now, for the conditional use for the short-term rentals, non-owner occupied short-term rentals, it's really described to us by Director Riggs as it's an opinion of the board. So what questions do we have to weigh? It's on each individual sort of to do that to some extent. Um, stipulating a little bit of that in this might make sense, I think, to help us make sure we're considering the right things, probably make the decision. Any questions for me about?
Well, as, as a personal citizen, you're, you're saying, um, consider both B3 and R3, both of those areas?
Correct.
Okay.
I've got a comment. One of the things, I, this kinda dawned on me, um, and, and I don't know, uh, Mr. Latch, neither is BZA capacity, we won't weigh in on this either, but one, we, we, when you prohibit something entirely, um, all you do is basically, especially when you prohibit something that isn't, um, that, that, um, you just can't get rid of, right? Like, that it just is happening whether you want it to or not. Um, you're kinda, it's, it's kind of a Sisyphean effort, right? And so, um, you know, we, we, currently, you can't camp in the city. Um, and we don't, and, and if someone camps in the city, and, and, and we, we're supposed to go and tell them stop, and we, and we do, um, and then you just tend to move them. So if you can create conditions to where it's permissible and certain, can, under certain conditions, then it's a little easier to go and say, "Sorry, you can't do that here. You, you could do it if you could, you know, you could, you know, be in this zone under these conditions." You know, it's kinda like when the strip club thing happened, right? We didn't have any prohibition on that anywhere. And, and, and so after we had the experience where, uh, the city, you know, had one proposed, and, and, um, you know, at, at the time, the BZA had to, um, had to consider it, and, um, made a bunch of, uh, comments about, um, you know, that they didn't like it, and, and we went to court, we lost on our First Amendment grounds. Um, and so we changed our zoning afterwards to, to create a structure around something that, and that probably was a bad example, because that doesn't happen all the time. But, but, um, you know, some of this, it's like the short-term rentals, right? That's probably a better example. You know, if something is happening anyway, i- it's better to create a structure around how to govern it happening as opposed to, you know, it just, it just, it just happens. So that's, that's a thought. I don't know, that probably didn't help us in our...
Anything else? What's the, I guess, what's the pleasure of the, uh, I'm, I'm, David, maybe I'd a, ask you this. Um, if, if we tabled this, and we chose to ask you to go back and work on it some more, what do you need from us to help you with that right now?
Two things. Uh, if you could tell me whether you prefer this to be only a B3 zone, only an R3 zone, or both, and if you think it would be acceptable to have it as an accessory use, or if it needs to be a conditional accessory use. Um, if you could tell me that, I can reword it to, uh, to, to your pleasure.
So, and, and so the conditional versus accessory gets to my point. It, so there are situations where it's not an accessory use, and, and so, um, if we choose to, well, I, I don't know, um, I, I like the idea of it being a conditional use. I don't know if we need to say that it's a conditional accessory use or not. I need help with that. But, but I, I think the idea of making it a conditional use, having some language that they have to comply with, and then the Zoning Board of Appeals looks at it and decides whether it's, um, it's something that we should do or not do. I, I like that in the end.
Well, I would propose, sir, that the, um, so moving it to conditional creates a more restrictive situation than just the way that it's written right now. So I, I would say keep it in both R3 and B3, but move it to conditional. Um, and, and if you could rewrite it in those terms, I think maybe that's in line with what we've discussed here.
How do you feel about whether it's gonna be an accessory use, or could it be a primary use on the structure?
Well, the bathroom requirements, I think, um, make that less of a concern. I think it would be a concern if we didn't have those bathroom requirements, um, you know, um, but I think, you know, because then you could functionally pitch a tent on a vacant parcel, um, and, and stay there, and you can do anything about it. But those bathroom requirements, I think, make it a little less of a, of a problem.
So, uh, going back to, uh, Mr. Phillips' comment about the, um, the property on Union Street there, by Station Street. I mean, you know, so, right now, I gue- I guess the station is being primarily used as a maintenance facility, right? Uh, I'm not sure exactly how they, and, uh, but there are bathrooms there.
It's an office that has a bathroom.
Oh, there is an office space there as well. So it could happen there, in which case it, um, would be an accessory as well, right, I guess, at that point? A conditional accessory?
Yeah, without primary.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Ms. Nysley?
So I would think that the accessory use, once again, is, is, puts us in a little bit more restrictive than a po- potentially a primary use.
Yes.
Which I would think we might wanna consider as we move towards building this into code the first time.
You, you're saying a conditional accessory use is the lan- was what we're trying to do then?
I'm, I'm pos-
You're posing that, yeah. You're posing that, as opposed to just a conditional use.
Do we have a, do we have a circumstance where we'd want it to be a primary? I don't know that we, we do. I mean, I think if, so here's an example, there's two parcels, right? And, and the parcel next door, this is kinda back to your church example, you know? Um, if, if one parcel, I mean, I suppose if you, if you interpreted it that those two parcels are, are together operating a, a thing, then it would be okay, um, even though that primary use isn't on the parcel that they're, they're doing. That would be the circumstance.
Put it under parking lot, yeah.
Well, what about, um, let me, uh, over, um, across Walmart, th- there's a restroom facility there, and we have soccer fields on the riverside of the, the, the bike trail. Um, could they do them there?
No, that's manufacturing, and there's no residential in manufacturing.
Okay.
So that specific spot, um...
Does it? Okay.
Yeah, so that entire stretch there, where the old airport was, is an M-zone, and we don't allow residential in M-zones.
Okay, okay. So I'm, do we need to add the accessory? It doesn't seem like we need to, to me.
Maybe we don't, and then that maybe that makes for more problems if we encounter a situation where we'd wanna say, "Well, we support it in theory, but zoning code currently says..."
We've got two checks. You know, the two checks, I think, if you move it to conditional are the BZA, right, 'cause they gotta get a conditionally permitted use, and then you got this extra check of the Service Safety Director validating, and there's proper sanitary facilities. And so I think it might be okay not to do conditionally accessory.
Conditionally?
Just to, it's conditional, but keep it in R1, R3, and R, R, B3.
B3, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Phillips, you okay with that?
No more comments from me.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, so I think w- where we're at is we're gonna table this, this particular case, and ask you to take a look at the language and try to incorporate what, what our recommendations are at this point.
And do, do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion to table? We do, okay. So I'm looking for a motion to table, if that's what we'd prefer to do.
So moved.
Ms. Nysley?
Moved as well.
Oh, Mr. Phillips, you, you say it?
To move it?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, um, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, okay, it's tabled. There we go.
I'll work on that for you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, so, uh, we did communications. Are there any reports that we need to deal with today?
No.
Okay. Um, so we, the next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda. Is there anybody who wants, Mr. Delich, Delich, do you know? Okay. Um, and I assume you're here for one specific purpose, so thank you. Okay, so are there any other, is there any other business or announcements?
I'd say that.
Hmm? No? Okay. Hearing none. Um, our next meeting is June 4th. Um, we are adjourned. Thank you.